And welcome, everyone here, to our special meeting here on November 29th, 2021. And let's see, so I did that, and I'll start with roll calls since we have so many people here that I'm not used to that. Ms. Abby, please.
Philkins?
Here.
Oh, I'm sorry, I got out of line. David Gregg, in the bathroom?
Bunce?
Yes, here.
Bosher?
Here.
Baumann?
Here.
Fent?
Here.
Putman?
Here.
And Rice?
Here.
Sorry for goofing up our schedule. I knew you gave me that look for a reason, but, okay, now we'll do the pledge if everyone doesn't mind.
My pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Everybody have a chance to look at this evening's special agenda again for November 29th, 2021. Just need an approval of that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it. Mayor, and Mr. Baumann, and, yep.
Yes or no? You approve?
Yes.
Bosher?
Yes.
Bunce?
Yes.
Fent?
Yes.
Baumann?
Yes.
Philkins?
Yes.
And Putman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Abby. Okay, next is needing approval, which I didn't find any errors, but Joe normally backs me up, but on the October 25th, 2021 meeting minutes.
Well, I read them, and I approved them the last time, so I'll approve these. The minutes, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the last.
I'll second them. And second, and Mr. Fent, yes, or Mayor, sorry, Fent.
Doesn't matter.
She doesn't do it very often, so we gotta give her credit.
Okay, I will, credit given.
All right, Baumann?
Yes.
Fent?
Yes.
Bunce?
Yes.
Philkins?
Yes.
Putman?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
And Bosher?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Abby. Okay, this evening, we have two separate public hearings. First, first one is a zoning amendment to recreational marijuana ordinance. Having read that, I think I am turning this over to Marcus.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Planning Commission, Mr. Rice, pleasure to meet you away from over here. Thank you for your service and willingness to volunteer to be on this board.
Pleasure.
And obviously, everyone, it's always great to see the board, and I really appreciate folks being able to make it this evening for a special meeting. And with that, I'd like to just take a moment and provide some history and some context as to why you're here this evening and sort of the whole, the whole matter as a whole. So approximately two years or so ago, the Cadillac City Council essentially set, set the bar or set the vision in place of becoming a local unit of government that accepts marijuana-based uses within the community. And I've used several ways of characterizing how the city got involved, all of which arguably we did so in a very conservative manner. And again, I'm gonna use some generalities as I describe this, but basically, there's the adult use or recreational side of the marijuana industry and licensing and all the rules that go along with it, and there's, for the most part, a duplicative side, all relegated to then the medical use, which is why this evening, as a, for instance, you'll see that we're looking at amending code sections pertaining to both, because we can't, well, you can, we aren't doing one without, without the other. The Cadillac City Council, when, when we entered into the business of being involved with marijuana-based uses, as I mentioned before, we did so very conservatively. There's probably a dozen different license categories on each side of the aisle, if you will. So there's growing categories for growing operations, and for just that class itself, there's then three different subclasses of licenses, all regarding quantity of plants. There's a license for secure transporters, there's a license for processors, there's a license for testing facilities, there's a license for, you know, what we would define as a retail-type store. And again, it's duplicative also on the, on both sides of, of the aisle, both on medical and on recreational or adult use. When the city created the program originally, it did so by only creating one available license, just one, for every single category with the following exceptions: two licenses for your traditional recreational retail-type store, two licenses for your traditional medical retail-type store, and zero consumption-based licenses. There are some communities that actually have consumption-based licenses. We have decided not, not to get into that. When we created the program and first offered it for the world to apply to us, the only industries interested in opening up shop in Cadillac at that time were those that wanted to open up stores. And we didn't receive a single application of interest for any other category. However, since that time, there's been some interest by several different companies that would love to be able to look at Cadillac sincerely as a place to put in an industrial-type use, that being a growing operation. To just take a brief pause and roll back a couple of seconds here, all of the licensed categories, with the exception of the retail-type stores, are remanded to being within the city's industrial zone. So if you want to have a growing operation or a processing operation, as a, for instance, it all has to be in our industrial parks or in our, in our area or our land that's zoned industrial. The retail stores have to be within the, basically, the central business districts or the commercial corridor of the city. The only exception to that is that under the recreational use side of licensing, there's one licensed category called a microbusiness. A microbusiness allows for a facility to have, I want to say, 150 plants, which is very small, to grow them, to process them, and then to sell the, the products that they create, all under one roof. That use as well was remanded into the industrial zone. So now we are a year, year and a half down the road, we're getting essentially, you know, knocks on our door about, hey, we'd love to be able to seriously look at Cadillac as a place to open up a growing facility, however, we need, you know, we need a license. Well, as I mentioned, we only created one license per category, and as of today, the largest of that, which is a Class C, has already been granted to an industry. That being said, the other industries that are still interested in looking at us, at least one of which I know is looking at multiple, are looking at what I just said, they're looking for multiple licenses. And so using a facility located in Everett, Michigan, as an example, which would be considered to be about a medium-sized cultivation facility, it's home to over 20 Class C licenses under one roof. We can't, we can't have anything like it here because our zoning code, which we did with intent when, when we originally got into the business, restricted us to only have one license available in the Class C category. Likewise, one license in Class A, one license in Class B. When we, when we put these codes in together initially, we were really focusing on the retail-type uses, the uses that would be within our downtown corridor. Other similar restrictions prevent the stacking of licenses, require a certain amount of spatial separation, and things that, that perhaps make a great deal of sense in a commercial corridor, but as we've analyzed the industrial-type use, they're, they're prohibitive. I mean, you, they, they don't make sense if the goal, which, which the goal is, is to create an environment that's friendly for this type of industry to be able to locate within the city. Using, again, the example that's about a half an hour down the road, several members of city council, city staff, the chair of the planning commission, were able to take a, an in-person tour of the facility, just to get a feel for it, get a feel for its size, for its impact, and, you know, at least on, on our own, do some comparing and contrasting to this type of use versus other type of industrial uses, specifically, of course, to what already exists in the city. I can at least attest that, in my opinion, this type of use has a very minimal impact as compared to some of the other wonderful uses that we, that we enjoy, that a lot of people have, you know, in Cadillac today, that employ a lot of people. There's very little to no noise emanating from the facility. It's basically just a big, you know, a big box. There is very little to no odors emanating from the facility. I visited on two separate occasions, about a month or so in between. On one occasion, there was no odors coming from it, and the second occasion, there was some odors coming from it. When asked about that, they said that over approximately a nine-week period of time, as the, the harvest essentially comes due, there's a spike in the odors that will emanate from the facility, especially when they open up their doors, and then it goes back down to basically nothing after the harvest is done. And so, again, comparing that to what we have, you know, in Cadillac today, there are a number of industries that have noise on a daily basis, that have odors on a daily basis, and pending the way, the way that the wind blows, you know, you can detect those odors from, from quite a distance away. And so, again, I'm not a scientist, nor am I trying to pretend to be one, it just seems to be a relatively speaking low impact. The changes that are necessary to make Cadillac a place that would essentially be friendly to seeing this type of industrial development in the community require both city council's involvement as well as the planning commission's involvement. And that kind of brings me back to why we're meeting here this evening, and that's an attempt to sync up the process. And so, the city council at its last meeting essentially did first reading and set public hearings regarding amendments to ordinances that deal with the licensing issues, for the most part. And what they did was essentially put in place a public hearing that'll amend the recreational and adult use licensing to remove those restrictions, so that if somebody wants to acquire 20 licenses from the city to create a cultivation center, not much different in scope or in scale, I should say, that you might find in Everett, that could become possible in Cadillac. If somebody wants to have a processing operation within that cultivation center, again, as long as they're abiding by all of the state statutes, and when I say that, you know, it's not just, it's not just statutes regarding spatial separation within the buildings, but, you know, there are statute, the statute also addresses odors and air handling equipment and security and all sorts of other nuances that, that we're not even necessarily going to be touching here, but just know that they are part of that, part of that broader picture. But what the, the city is looking at doing is also removing that impediment as well, so that you can have, you know, a facility that's cultivating and then processing all under the same roof. The memorandum that's in the packet this evening was crafted from one of the city's attorneys, Laura. Laura has joined us this evening as well, and she's available through Zoom. You can see her in the, in the TV screens in back in the corner. But, but basically, there's following changes, co-location, and I'm just gonna kind of run through them, run through them quickly here. This would allow for the, both marijuana, recreational and medical marijuana facilities to co-locate. We're not creating any additional retail-type licenses, but by cleaning up the zoning code, this would allow for, if at some point in the future, a medical license should become available, which it might, because one or two or both of the current medical retail license holders may decide not to move forward, and it's certainly possible that a, a license holder that has one of the adult use licenses or recreational licenses might apply and get a medical license. This would allow for the co-location of those, of those uses. The stack growers license is another area that we're looking at cleaning up within the code. This would maintain our, our prohibition on stack growers licenses, but add the exemption for marijuana establishments and facilities within the industrial zones. So again, specific to, to just the industrial areas. The minimum distance requirements, it would remove that prohibition, and the way that, the way that we have looked at this is that the manufacturers and industries that are currently within our city industrial zones, our city industrial areas, are already creating noise, creating odors, creating traffic, creating all of the things that they do when they operate their business, as their businesses and as their properties are currently located adjacent to any number of other uses, and there hasn't been an issue with it. This issue, and its impact, is by far, if not the same, I would say, a lot less of an impact than a lot of other industries that, that currently exist. And so, by having a spatial separation zone in there for prohibiting this type of basically box to get plunked down, would, I think, the unintended consequence would, would perhaps take a lot of parcels or potentially a lot of parcels out of play, which is unfortunate because, you know, somebody could put a rock-crushing machine or something, think of any industry that makes noise, makes sounds, makes odors, right there, if it wasn't a marijuana-based use, and create a, a negative impact to adjacent neighborhoods, whereas this, this wouldn't. So that is another part of the, of the change as well. The other changes really have to deal with some of the definitions and equivalent licenses. And Laura, I don't know if there's anything that you wanted to clarify, if I put my foot in my mouth at all with any of what I said, but feel free to, to jump in.
Sure, thanks, Marcus, I appreciate that. That was a great overview and a great recitation of the background. The only thing I want to clarify is the difference between co-location and equivalent licenses, and it's very easy to kind of get those two flipped around in your mind. Co-location allows multiple types of medical at one location or multiple types of recreational at one location. City council amended the code previously to allow co-location, but the zoning ordinance still had it as prohibited. So this change is one that frankly probably should have been made at the same time that council made the change to what we call the regulatory part, the non-zoning part. So this is kind of cleanup to make sure the two are consistent. Equivalent licenses, which is, Marcus, I think what you were talking about where there could be additional licenses opening up, would allow a recreational and medical of the same type, like a medical marijuana provisioning center and a recreational marijuana retailer, you know, the storefronts, the places that sell, to operate those equivalent licenses, one medical, one recreational, in the same business without any separation between them, without separate inventory, separate entrances, and things like that. That is something new that is in what city council is considering. It's not part of the zoning because it doesn't need to be, it's something that's regulatory. So I've explained that in the memo, and I, and I probably could have made it clear that the regulatory part, regulatory amendments, that Roman numeral two means the stuff that city council is doing that's not in the zoning ordinance amendments that are before you tonight, but I wanted to include that regulatory part, so you could see the background of what city council has going on at the same time. And as Marcus very accurately put it, we're trying to sync it up, sync these amendments together, so that these changes take effect around the same time. So I think that's the only clarification, Marcus, that I wanted to make, and I guess to add stack grower licenses, I guess by the name only applies to growers, so you can't have stacked retailer licenses or things like that.
Thank you, Laura. Mr. Chair, this presentation, information, background would, would serve for both of the conversations on planning commission's docket this evening, so.
Sort of just the verbiage, recreational and medical.
Correct.
I have a question before we open a public hearing and stuff, so our existing, we currently have two adult slash recreational. If they wanted, I don't think they would, but could they approach us on the medical since neither medical person has moved forward and operate out of what they have going?
So it's a yes and a no answer. While, as Laura very, very eloquently said, I know I was a little chunky earlier, so I apologize, not, not for anything before the planning commission in terms of adjudication. However, the reality is that there are two medical provisioning or retail-type facility licenses already granted. Neither party has moved forward yet, other than one that, that went forward for planning commission's site approval, but at this point has still yet to do anything with it. There's rumors running all over the place about Lansing considering making some form of wholesale changes to make it easier for licensee holders of the medical type to somehow get an adult use type. Nobody really knows the whens or the ifs or the hows and the whys and how it'll all kind of come together, but that continues to, that continues to be talked about. In any case, to try to really directly answer your question, should one or both of those medical retail license holders come to the city and say, guys, you know what, we're, we're just not going to be able to make it work, and there's nobody else left on the waiting list, then if one of the two license holders or both that already have an adult use license wish to apply for consideration to get one of those available medical ones, then the changes that is gonna be, that'll be considered this evening would make that available for them to do. Make sense?
Understood.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Anybody have anything else before I open public hearing?
Yeah, I finally figured out 8A, Laura or Marcus, 8A, the way it's written on both ordinance changes, I had to actually map it out because it doesn't, the words don't make a lot of sense, because it used to exclude and then include and then exclude again. And, and I think that now the way it's written, it appears to allow anything that's not a provisioning center and not a retailer or a microbusiness, so I'm crossing over on both of the sets, would now be allowed within 1,000 feet of a school and be adjacent to a school.
In the industrial zone, right?
Correct, yes.
Right, because we're removing the spatial separation provisions that are in there currently, and I think it's 500 feet.
But in 8A, it says 1,000.
It says 1,000.
Laura, is that just a typo?
I saw 500 up above.
There.
I think 1,000 is what we have in this.
And it's still, it's subject to 8B, so it's, it's 1,000 except is limited by 8B now, as rewritten.
Up above.
And we, and we can change that if that should be 500, that's what, one of the things we can do here.
Well, I thought the, Laura, the intent was to remove the spatial separation within the industrial zone for the industrial-type uses, so that, like a growing.
Right, so saying it may be, right, an establishment may be located within 1,000 feet of a school, subject to 8B and C, however, still a retailer or microbusiness establishment may not be located adjacent to a public or private K-12 school or a college or university. So those other establishments can be located, any establishment can be located within 1,000 feet, but there's the limitation on retailers and microbusinesses cannot be adjacent to the school.
Right, so it keeps, it keeps that separation in for those uses, correct?
Correct, correct.
How?
The, the distance that a retailer or microbusiness may not be located adjacent to a public or private K-12.
No, I'm sorry.
It's not keeping 1,000-foot difference.
The other, the other businesses. Everything other than a retailer.
Could be adjacent, but they're in the industrial zones as well.
And we, we, we want to permit that, I mean, with the limitation of...
That's a question, yeah, and that's certainly a question, that's a policy question.
And that's the, that's the request, so all of the uses other than retail are basically your secure transporter-type services, so you're talking about somebody that operates, you know, a van service, a laboratory testing, you know, type facility, which would be like a medical testing-type facility. We don't, you know, we don't have that either, but it would be, you know, office, essentially office space. The cultivation facility or the growing facility, which is the primary reason why we're even here this evening, because of the interests that, that we have in Cadillac. And then processing facilities. The processing facilities are basically manufacturing-type, imagine like an assembly line where they're taking, you know, product that's coming off, literally coming off of a line, and they're finishing it, they're packaging it, they're labeling it, getting it, they're boxing it and getting it ready for then a, a secure transfer, a secure transporter to come pick it up and, and take it to the market. The language still restricts the microbusiness use because that still has the retail component in it, and we, you know, sort of taking baby steps, if you will, didn't want to do anything necessarily to adjust anything regarding retail at this junction point. We were only really trying to focus on the industrial uses. So it's still, it still maintains that spatial separation for, for any retail or provisioning center-type facility. But the other type uses, looking at them for what they are, not necessarily by what they make. If you look at, you know, the, the scale and scope of all of the different products that are created and manufactured within our, our industrial parks within the, in the community, it's, it's pretty broad-based. Depending what product you're talking about, it might have a host of different, dare I call them nuisances, but things that, things that are offshoots of the process that it creates, trying not to necessarily discriminate against one from the other or, or this from the others, looking at, you know, these other industrial-type uses, they're all really low-impact, which is why we felt comfortable saying, hey, if it's a industrial use, it obviously has to be within the industrial zone, and just like any of the other industrial uses that take place within the industrial zone, we don't have any other spatial separation requirements from any of the other adjacent areas, so.
So would this, in the industrial zone, would it match what the zoning ordinance says then for any other industrial facility in the industrial zones?
That would be the outcome. That would be, yes, by, these amendments would, would make it so that it's treated no differently than if another castings plant wanted to come into town, or another, you know, co-gen wood-burning chip facility, or rubber plant, or boat company, or, you know, defense contractor, or anything that, that we make. There?
I was just seeking some clarification. Mr. Baumann was talking about 8A and the, and within 8A, it, it references maybe located within 1,000 feet of a public or private K-12 school or college or university, but up above, when you were first talking about zone, excuse me, the minimum distance requirements under the zoning amendments, it says 500 feet.
So I, I can speak to that and clarify that. The reason is because the statute, as a default, says that you can't locate an establishment within 1,000 feet of a pre-existing school unless an ordinance provides otherwise. So what we're doing is saying, yeah, we know that MRTMA, the state statute specifically for adult use, has this 1,000-foot rule, but we're allowed to change that, and we are. So that's why it's referring to 1,000 feet there. It's not creating a 1,000 foot buffer. It's kind of acknowledging, you know, the default would be it couldn't be located within 1,000 feet. But we're saying, yes, you can be within 1,000 feet, subject to these other locational requirements, if that makes sense.
And that is on the industrial side only?
Correct.
Okay, I think that's where the.
That's what that's what we have done. We've we've eliminated that for those industrial establishments only.
To be clear, it doesn't say only in industrial zone, it says just not in residential zone.
We, right, it does it by establishment. So but right now, those types of establishments, you're only allowing in your industrial zones. So you don't allow growers in your commercial zone, for example.
That's true.
So it requires a little cross referencing there with the sections of your zoning ordinance that lists those as special land uses.
Which section is that in, Laura?
So in, oh, let me pull it back up.
Cross reference.
You have to go into each district. For example, your light industrial has it at, and Marcus or John, if you can get there faster, let me know. Principal uses permitted subject to special conditions, for example, 46 dash 491. Subsections eight and nine allows the recreational and medical establishments. And that is the light industrial district. And then. Sorry, there's several different sections because you go into each zone. So for central business district, then it limits it only to certain types of establishments. That's where it limits it to the retailer, not just any establishment. So you could not have any establishment other than those set forth. I'm sorry, now I'm looking at 46 dash 397, special land uses permitted in the central business districts. John, I don't know if there's a map that that shows those or not, but I don't have one hand. I said that, now I see it says the map in table one identifies the areas in which provisioning centers may be located, subject to the other locational and distant requirements.
That map, we that map lives on our homepage as well.
Okay, so it's not, yeah, it's not in the actual.
Yeah, it's actually right on our website, though, too.
And then same with, I think tourist service districts has a provision. Perhaps below. Yeah, again, allowing retailers 46 dash 459.
What was the question? I apologize if I'm retreading.
I think the question was where in the zoning ordinance does it say where the different types of establishments are can be located?
I was trying to find the, yeah, I think Laura got it right, that if we say it's only allowed in industrial, I was trying to understand where it said it was only industrial.
How you get there, right?
And she was noting that it's excluded in all of these other areas.
Correct.
But it appears to only be excluded, am I right, Laura, by silence in that it's not a permitted use in those areas?
Well, I guess I would say in those business districts, central business district, I think general business district and tourist district, the only establishment that is allowed there is the retailer.
So it it silences to the others means that it's not permitted?
Right, right, nothing is permitted unless it is specifically permitted, right? In zoning, if we don't allow it, it's excluded.
Yeah, that's that's standard policy.
Well, it's always good for us to hear, so. Assuming that a bunch of laypeople, even the lawyer on the group knows that is a bridge too far.
Since there's caps on licenses for the retail, will there be caps on the licenses in industrial? I didn't see anything about.
So the caps, oh, sorry, go ahead, Marcus.
I was I was gonna say that that's the the real intent of what what we need to create with city council or that opportunity we have to create with city council. The caps on the retail type facilities, they're still there. At some point, they may not be, but they are for right now. However, the caps on the industrial type licensing have to be removed. Otherwise, this whole process of trying to, dare I use the word cultivate, cultivate a growing type industry to come to Cadillac can't get off the ground. And, you know, I don't know necessarily why, when the statute from from the state came to be, you know, it it limited plants the way that it did. But growing operations need to acquire multiple licenses in order to have the density necessary to be able to grow enough product to be able to make it all work, so.
Yeah, and I think the MRA has evolved in its view on that. Now you are seeing, obviously, the stacked grower licenses being allowed regulation wise at the state level. And then we can, of course, do it at the local level because it's very hard to amend the recreational marijuana statute because it was voter initiated.
Marcus, are there, you know, I keep looking at the zoning map here. Are there are there any specific parcels that, you know, by changing this will will have a significant impact?
Oh, without a doubt. One parcel.
That that I guess are on the radar.
Oh, yeah, without without a doubt. One parcel with certainty happens to be the formal, the formal, the former Mitchell Bentley parcel. It's a parcel that we're celebrating right now because of the Consumer Solar Garden project that's on it. Part of the parcel is not usable for this type of industrial use because of its proximity to the adjacent neighborhood. Should these changes become, you know, effective, then it would allow for the remainder of that site to be redeveloped.
So I I assume then that there's at least one site that's within 500 feet of an existing one family dwelling?
Yeah, Mitchell Bentley would be at least one example that I'm most familiar with. And, you know, the thought, you know, the thought also was that back in in the heyday, when that was a fully operational manufacturing facility, you know, there there was noise, there was commotion, there was a concrete plant right next door, even closer to the residential neighborhood. And so, you know, by removing those more traditional manufacturing facilities and replacing it with a state of the arts box where it isn't making, you know, noise or sound or, you know, throwing things up into the, you know, up into the air type of thing, it might actually improve quality of life for some of the adjacent neighborhoods that are residential in base. So just potential positive consequences.
Was was there a reason the 500 feet was originally in the ordinance?
Honestly, we took a super conservative, when I say we, I'm referring to the city, of course, took just a very super conservative approach, just not knowing anything at the time and really just focusing all of our attention more so on the retail, the retail outlets, the storefronts. And the rest of the licensing categories sort of just rode the coattails of the policy direction that city council took when it was looking at the storefronts. And so, you know, the the conversation, as I basically summarize or paraphrase, was really on, okay, if we're going to allow these storefronts to happen, we want to make sure that they're, you know, not within the what we define as the real core downtown area, but a couple of blocks off that core downtown area. And if we're going to allow one of the core downtown, that's fine, but it's got to be below grade, not on Mitchell Street. And, you know, we're just going to let, you know, one one license for each category. And we're going to allow for spatial separation to be, and I forgot the number for the for the retail, but, you know, make sure it's far away from a school, far away from from that kind of element, 100 feet from a house, I think is what it was. And when it comes to industrial, how about 500 feet? You know, again, not really having any any matter of facts behind that that decision other than it just sounded good at the time, thinking, well, there might be some noise and commotion, you know, let's do that. But skipping ahead now, a year, year and a half down the road, visiting a site, seeing what they're about and feeling comfortable in making a recommendation that, you know, the the use and the impact that this use brings is going to be far less than what we already have in the community. Let's not necessarily encumber ourselves from having what could be a great development with lots of jobs, good paying jobs could lead to not just, you know, traditional blue collar type jobs, but also white collar jobs and other things that we don't really have here, especially if we end up getting a, you know, laboratory type testing facility down the road as well to to help offset, you know, the cultivation facility, so or facilities. So, you know, looking at a crystal ball, you know, it's hard to to really guess the future other than by saying that 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 there's one grower that already has the class C license, but basically is on standby because when putting together his architectural plans, said, hey, by the way, I need a need a processing license. And I said, well, I said, right now, I can't even offer it to you to apply for because it's not legal for you to put it under the same roof. And so he he's well aware of of these conversations and understands that we're working on on making that possible. The other grower that I'm talking with is a much larger one. And, you know, he understands that there's no class C licenses available at the moment. And even if there was one, he wouldn't be interested because he said, I need like 20 of them. So, you know, so he said, we need to, you know, something has to change before we can really move things forward to a point where I can, you know, make Cadillac a serious location for consideration. So, you know, that's why we're here this evening. That's why the city council on their end are also going through the process of changing the regulatory type type changes, so.
My last question, I nearly promised.
No, it's fine.
Is there an industrial site that is adjacent to a school?
Not that I'm aware of. John, are you?
Heritage Christian is probably the closest.
So my only my only concern remains that last sentence in the rewritten eight A.
This heritage, it's close, but I don't know that it butts the industrial park, does it?
Yeah.
That's close, but.
No.
I think it does.
Where?
Shall we?
Right there.
I don't think there is.
Right there.
Both those purples are light industrial and heritage is right there. I bet the back of their playground is.
Yeah, you're right.
500 feet or less.
Yep.
I only know that because it's next door to my shop.
Well, the other thing to keep in mind, too, is all these applications will have to go through a special use permit. And so you'll have a chance at the site plan. If you think buffering or fencing or other things would benefit the situation, you you have the ability to do that as well.
Yeah. All right, you just make it conditional upon the application for your review.
Yeah, they couldn't build there. You'd have to rezone that. Or tear down the school, either way.
Well.
This one here.
It's already zoned, our one.
No, this one, this is.
It's by color.
I understand that, but the school is right here. That's light industrial.
So it's industrial.
Light industrial, so you can't put one of these things there.
There you can.
You can put it in industrial, can't you?
As long as it's not close to 1,000 feet from a school.
1,000 feet's going to be gone.
So it's a 500 feet from the school.
That's gone, too.
It's gone.
Then why don't you just build it in the school?
And keep in mind, you know, the zoning ordinance as well has some screening and odor control and other mitigation requirements, you know, that are designed to help reduce the impact on adjacent properties.
You wouldn't want to.
And that's where, you know, for to the extent that I would say, use your imagination. Use your imagination in terms of any any other industrial type use. That could go there right now, today, that might be a lot more of a nuisance than this. And so I'm not trying to say that there's somebody looking at putting a marijuana facility, right, you know, growing facility or or processing facility or any any type, right on whatever, you know, lot of the day you 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 put your finger on. But if it's an industrial lot as it sits there today, then any industrial use today could go there that's already in in the park or maybe not even in the park, that may have a lot more noise or smell or commotion or you name it, next to it. So, you know, I know it sounds funny to say this, but it it might be a complimentary.
Well, there are a lot fewer armed people interested in CCI or Avon or Acwell. When you've got a couple thousand marijuana plants worth real money to the street, I mean, there's a different harm. I'm not saying it's not perhaps complimentary to your point. I think that that's that's the policy decision, at least the council will make. And to me, that's the question at the base of this. We reduce amount of space, the space was there for a reason, is that a good thing or not?
But as Marcus said, we didn't have a good understanding of the impacts when we set those standards. We've learned a lot more about the industry since we've been involved with it for over a year.
Anybody have any other questions for Laura and or Marcus before I open part of a public hearing?
I I guess I have a question for Laura.
Sure.
What is the spatial separation requirement between schools and the retail type uses?
Under under your ordinance currently?
Yeah.
Currently, and I think, sorry, go ahead.
I think we threw it out with the exception that they couldn't be adjacent or abutting the property.
Well, your previous version, I want to make sure I pull up the original as well, 46, 752. I'm going to look at recreational, just for ease of reference, because they are so similar. It has distance requirements that are as follows. An establishment other than a retailer, so those would be the industrial ones, may not be located within 1,000 feet of a public or private K-12 school or college or university. A retailer may be located within 1,000 feet of a public or private K-12 school or college or university, subject to AC, and except that a retailer may not be located adjacent to a public or private K-12 school or college or university. And then additionally, it had that a grower, processor, safety compliance establishment or micro business may not be located within 500 feet of any existing one family dwelling and that a retailer may not be located within 100 feet of any existing one family dwelling.
So the.
I think retailers can be within 1,000 feet as long as it's not adjacent to a school and not within 100 feet of a house.
That was exactly.
Right, that's what your ordinance says right now. Yep.
I don't know if that's helpful at all or not, but I just wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah, and my recollection, I think, Marcus, you said this as well with that 1,000 feet, was it was taking kind of that conservative approach. And the reason, if I recall correctly, what council thought about at that time, not not to speak for council, was there were, you know, limited spaces. If you made it 1,000 feet for retailers, that would eliminate most places where retailers could go. So that's why there was that proviso that, okay, you don't have to meet that 1,000 feet, but we don't want you adjacent to a school or within 100 feet of a one family dwelling. But realistically, if you did the 1,000 feet, you'd really not have a place to put them.
And that's a concern that we have also with our industrial zone, too. It's limited space, so.
And that was principally because of the shallow depth of our commercial districts. They're all bordered by residential uses and that would have precluded the use at all.
I am a liar. Laura, eight B and eight C both reference that they cannot be located in a district exclusively for residential use. But you mentioned it's not allowed in the other sections of our zoning ordinance.
So, yeah, and that language is from the statute. And it's to draw a distinction because anyone in the business is familiar with what the statute provides, which I can talk, specifically has this language, areas zoned exclusively for residential use. So we're making it clear which parts of that we're just keeping as is there. And where we're adding that other distance requirement, that does not take away from the other zoning sections, which clearly delineate where these establishments are permitted. So it's really just reflecting or acknowledging the statute, which which also has that requirement. So it's really just reflecting or acknowledging the statute, which, which also has that requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
What is a safety compliance facility?
A testing facility to make sure the product is safe.
Okay.
Very important, if you've been watching the news, there've been some, you know, things they've caught, and that's important.
Everybody ready?
Yep.
You sure enough, I'll give you another question. That's what you really need, so, okay. Okay, at this time, we will open public hearing pertaining to the zoning amendment to recreational marijuana ordinance at this time. Anyone in our viewing audience or anywhere, if you're in favor against either or, please let us know in some way, shape, or form. Were there any communications, John, sorry?
No, there were not.
Hearing nothing or seeing no responses, at this time, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Again, just on the zoning amendment to recreational. At this time, the board can discuss more if need be.
And when you're finished with the discussion, you do have a resolution in your packets that you would use as the basis for your motion to approve if you so desire. And that would be the resolution recommending approval of an ordinance to amend section 46-752 of the Cadillac City Code relating to recreational marijuana establishments.
The next step following that would then be the city council conducting a, a public hearing as well to consider ratification then of the planning commission's actions.
I think December 6th, if I recall.
Not for this one, I don't know.
Not for this?
Right.
Yeah, they'll still have to introduce it at council.
Yeah, so this would, this would be December 20th at the earliest for city council.
Forget what I read on December 6th, anyway, doesn't matter. Okay, so my resolution's back here, but, okay.
Looking for somebody to make that motion.
Sure, well, I, I, no comments, because we kinda got all our comments out of the way up front, really, but.
Does anybody see anything on this they want to change?
I didn't, but Joe's the one that does.
That's kinda what I'm talking to.
I hoped you were.
I, I'm just concerned on the policy choice, I guess, and the operation of the language, especially under 8A. Stacked, to meet stacked licenses are, seem a fine outcome, especially if the council decides to change the regulatory aspects of the ordinance, why not make them stacked? There's value there. I, to me, there was a reason to not be close to schools and to have the limitation on distance, and I guess that's what I'm struggling with, and I, just personally.
It's gotta be in light industrial, correct? Or in industrials park.
Correct.
If I may, might make a suggestion, if, if the school policy question is the question, perhaps you amend it to, to simply restrict it being adjacent to an educational facility.
Yeah, I think so.
I'd be really comfortable with that. Are we only on 752, or are we-
Yes.
753?
Yeah, you'll do it again for the next one around.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with that, I'm kinda- You know, when, just looking, and I'm, once again, looking back at the map, you know, trying to look at this. You look, what if, I believe, Consumers Energy right now, right, would be in 1-1, which would be adjacent to the school. Think way outside the box, what if they sold that old facility and you wanted to put one right there?
We've had this discussion before with changing somebody's zoning, saying, okay, if that person leaves, it's still there.
Down the road.
But if we make it so it can't be adjacent to a school, then we're good, right? Or within a certain amount of-
I'd feel more comfortable with that if-
Then it wouldn't matter, all right?
We're talking about these-
We're talking about-
These two parcels, right?
Yeah.
Talking here?
No.
So I, I-
Oh, these are downtown, yeah, these are, this is AAR.
I would make a motion to approve the proposed ordinance to amend section 46-752 as proposed, except as altered, as I will now say, 8A, the last sentence to read, however, an establishment may not be located adjacent to a public or private K-12 school or a college or university.
Support.
Perfect.
Shades of Denny Benson.
There, yeah, I saw him the other day, anyway.
What does adjacent really mean? Is there a limit?
Well, this is just-
1,000 feet.
What if there's a, one business in between that takes up an narrow space?
Is it 1,000 feet? Because that's what you're gonna look at, you're gonna look at adjacent or 1,000 feet.
That's something we're questioning. Adjacent could be a lot of things.
Yes.
It's just, Laura may have an answer to that.
It would be touching.
That would be my, my thought.
I mean, if, I don't think there, and I don't, I don't know that there are a lot of skinny tiny parcels that divide a school from an industrial lot, so I'm not sure how often that would come up. But if there were a parcel in between the establishment and the school, then they would not be adjacent.
So this is that, this is the park, or whatever you want to call it, between AAR, and this is, I can't think of the name, it's a machine shop.
Yeah.
Is it right here?
Yeah, here, and consumers.
Is-
The lot.
Consumers not down here, are they?
No, because it's R2. This is, this is-
It's gotta be Consumers.
Can you guys-
Yeah, I know what you're saying, okay, so it's combining.
No, we're still debating.
Nah, I'm just asking.
We're here, combined since it has to be both.
I kinda have a problem with the adjacent part. I mean, if, if, if that's what we want, then we're better off with a distance. If it's adjacent, lots can be split, I mean, there's a lot of things that can change.
You are no doubt correct. I, I think my attempt was to meet the policy goals and avoid being right next to a school. I mean, that's, it is a fair question and a fair concern that you have. It seems less likely to get a split that would be, at least in my opinion, fairly on its face, clear on why somebody was trying to split off 100 feet between the school and their new facility. But it is a fair question.
I mean, once again, I, I, I'm looking at the space over on Leeson, knowing that there's a couple of owners in that little parcel right on Leeson before the tracks, and it's proximity to Heritage, you know, and, and that's the only place I see an issue.
I don't know if it's helpful at all, but in the land division ordinance, you still have to meet certain lot minimum width ratios. So you could not simply say, all right, I'm gonna create a, you know, 10-foot wide strip to try to divide these.
Right, wouldn't be legal.
Yes, but a lot of lots are 100 feet wide.
Those would be mostly residential.
Would it?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Okay, then I'm okay with adjacent, okay.
Okay, I think, Ms. Abby.
Okay. Bowman?
Yes.
Philkins?
Yes.
Bosher?
Yes.
Bunz?
Yes.
Fent?
Yes.
Putman?
Yes.
And Rice?
Yes.
Thank you, Abby. Part two of our public hearing this evening.
I can repeat everything.
Could you? Will you?
Motion to close.
Or you can just take my word for it, it's the same as the hard one.
I think we can get a second on that, Joe.
I was kidding, of course, you know that. A mayor, I was just-
Okay, I gotta finish reading that. Didn't get there. This is a zoning amendment to the medical marijuana ordinance. So at this time, just because, I'll turn this back over to Marcus for a moment, but I don't know what he's gonna limit himself to say.
Mr. Chair, it's the same presentation. All the same questions and answers are relevant-
Yes.
-to the second part as you just did for the first part.
Perfect, so, say. So now, at this time, we will open the public hearing on the zoning amendment again for medical marijuana ordinance. Anyone in our viewing audience, and there's nobody in front of us, but anybody, anywhere that wants to communicate anything to us for or against, please do so. Excuse you. So we'll wait a moment.
Everybody's phone's off, right?
I did, I accidentally had mine on for the time, but I got pinged and I turned it off, but. I, I forwarded all those calls to your phone anyway.
Thanks, Phil.
We're playing Jingle Bells.
Or, or the mayor, but.
Does anybody see any difference between the two, and why don't we amend it?
Uh, there's one word difference, yes, medical versus recreational.
Well, and I think we just have to close the public hearing, and then I'd propose the same thing if that's all right with you.
Go ahead, boss.
All right, so, hearing, or seeing no one here, we're gonna close public hearing at this time. The board now will make a decision.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Please do, sir.
I propose that the planning commission recommend to the city council the amendment of an ordinance, or, an, an ordinance to amend section 46-753, et cetera, except, as proposed, except as described here, and edit to 8A. The last sentence will now read, however, a facility may not be located adjacent to a public or private K-12 school or a college or university.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Fent.
Okay with that?
I'm good.
Okay, everybody good? Abby, please.
Rice?
Yeah.
Putman?
Yes.
Fent?
Yes.
Bunz?
Yes.
Bosher?
Yes.
Philkins?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Thank you, Abby. Okay, so this evening, there is no new business, there is no old business. Any board member comments? No communications, Mr. Wallace already stated. We have no public other business, and if everybody is good, we're out.
Thank you.
Moving right along.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.